All right. The work session of the Annapolis City Council for Thursday, October 18th, 2018 will be called to order at 3:05. At this time, would everyone willing enable, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. City Attorney, oh, sorry. Well?
Do we confirm the agenda at the beginning, or should we discuss it if we have questions about it? Mr. Attorney?
I don't know that, I'm not sure what the purpose of doing that is.
In work sessions?
Right, this is a work session and...
Yeah, well, my, because my question is not so much the rate study, but the second discussion on the second reader about adequate facility. And I think my colleague from Ward 1 would have more information, but I think this was originally called for by the committee and ultimately Alderman for us to discuss amongst ourselves, but I know there are presenters listed on the agenda, so I'm just curious how we're going to handle this. What's it mean if they're presenters, are they going to be given time to speak, are they just there for us to question? And how does this balance with the original intention?
That's why I'm surprised Shanika's not here. This, the genesis of this request was from the Housing and Human Welfare Committee, where it was the second or third time, I mean, Chiquia might know that, about that, where we postponed the, our review of adequate facilities because we were waiting to see, you know, where the other committees were with it, one being rules and regs or whatever. And it's been months, and it's like, okay, let's just stop this madness and say, you know, and say, let's meet as a group and have some consensus among ourselves as a council, how we want to move forward with adequate facilities. So it was sort of a, you know, this is open to the public, but it was sort of a, in, a discussion among ourselves. So, and that's where I left off with it. I have, you know, that was the genesis of this, and here we are. So if there's a public testimony that's to help our discussion, of course, it's welcomed. But the objective was to say, you know, this, if we didn't meet as a group, I thought, I think that it would have just died in committee.
Yeah, and there is no city code provision that expressly addresses work session meetings, but, so we follow Robert's Rules of Order. I wasn't aware that this was going to be an issue, so I didn't bring Robert's Rules with me. If we need to, I'll take a look at Robert's Rules and figure out what the right process might be to proceed.
I have no problem with...
There you go, okay.
No, I'm just explaining the genesis of the meeting and...
And I just wanted to let you know what, where I understood we were.
So, a recent Capitol article or editorial suggested that we scrap council committees and go to work sessions to deliberate legislation. And I guess I would ask the city manager, when the council deliberates, the county council deliberates legislation, how do they handle it? Do they have testimony and input from outside experts and things like that?
At work sessions?
Yeah.
Generally, no. So work sessions at the county are for generally more complex legislation for the city administration to explain, or the bill sponsor, if it's a council member. You know, to dive in a little deeper to make sure everybody understands what the legislation is doing. It might be for something like this where the county had retained a consultant and the consultant is going to present, you know, whatever work they were hired to do for the county. It might be BG&E coming in to talk about when they were going to put smart meters in and what that would mean for everybody, or Verizon was going to put FiOS in and what that would mean for everybody. Things like that. There is no public testimony at work sessions, like anybody from the audience want to come up and speak. The council members might ask someone to be present and be able to ask them questions, but it was very rare. It was generally staff, or someone retained by the staff, or something that had nothing to do with a piece of legislation. It was just an information type of thing, like Verizon telling us where they're going to lay the FiOS lines, or something like that. So, that's how the county council ran their work sessions. Of course, they were forbidden under the charter from having any standing committees. County council can only act as a body, and they can only act by ordinance or resolution. That's it. So, you know, if they had complex legislation and everybody wanted to understand it, it would be at a work session. And then that way, or it would be at a council meeting, it depended who the chairman was, whether they even had a work session. It was entirely up to the county council chairman.
So, as a follow-up, how does the county council hear from various constituencies on legislation? People are in favor of it, people are opposed to it?
Public hearings on a bill, or an ordinance. So at a county council meeting, a bill or resolution will be introduced. Bills have to be advertised for a certain period of time, so the public hearing on a bill would not be until the, unless there would happen to be a Monday holiday, but it had to be more than two weeks later. So if the next one happened to be a Tuesday, you could do it, but generally, it was a month later. They would have a public hearing on the bill, and anybody can come testify.
So would they hear a public hearing first, or do the work session?
It would, it usually, it's usually was a work session first, but they didn't have work sessions on everything. I mean, like, they had a work session, probably multiple work sessions, even when we did the stormwater watershed restoration and protection fund at the county, because that was really complicated. But most ordinances and resolutions, they don't have work sessions.
Right, but the council's tradition is that we don't send things to committee or work session until after we've had public hearing.
They just, they might have a work session once a month, oh, you mean you guys, I'm sorry.
Because why would you have a work session to discuss something and then hear, and make decisions, and then hear from the public?
Because you're not making decisions at work sessions, you're getting information at work sessions. So the purpose of the work session would be for the staff to come and present a complex bill to you, so you understood it. And likewise, so the public could hear it at the work session and understand it. And so you could ask questions about the legislation. Then, when you got to the council meeting, there would be a public hearing on it. Now, if they didn't have a work session, the county council could do all of those same things on a Monday night at the public hearing on that bill. But they have a legislated number of legislative days in the year, and when it gets to midnight, it's another day, you can't do it. So that's why they didn't want to suck up hours on a Monday night on one piece of legislation, getting everybody to understand it. They would take the time to do that at the work session, so that they weren't pushing up against midnight.
They just can't man up to being tough. So, Mr. Mayor, you were gone, but the editorial, I think, got it half-right. I do think our work sessions ought to be working sessions amongst the council members. We have a number of tough issues, both legislative and not, to discuss. So I agree with that part of it, but I think we'll need to develop some new rules of the road for those kinds of legislative work sessions. I still think there's a role for the council, for committees, but I think that's more drilling down into specific issues. And so I think I would espouse both, keeping the committees, but that should be a dialogue for a work session, where we talk about. Yeah, or a retreat, yes, or both, yes. So, it's interesting, but I didn't think that the council, the county council work sessions were where they heard advocacy positions on legislation. So, that, I think that's the genesis of Alderman Savage's question.
I'm sorry, I just, I saw Shanika come in, and I just wanted her to know what I said, that the genesis of this work session was our committee, where we said, let's talk about, not only adequate facilities, but also development, and if we can agree on, you know, how that relates to adequate facilities, and we need to have some agreement at least on development, so that we can address adequate facilities. Is that your recollection, or I'd like you to add to that?
May I? Sorry, thank you, welcome back.
Hey, how are you?
Hi.
I thought you left after, I'm like, where's Shanika? Did I scare her off?
No, yes, I think it was a number of committees that was looking at the same piece of legislation. Some of those committees had people come in to testify, took some expert testimony, and I think we wanted to make sure that as committees, we weren't duplicating the effort, that we had the benefit of the same insight that the other committees did before we made any decisions on it. So I think that it was your wisdom, that maybe it was more appropriate for a work session, that we could all have the same, benefit of the same information before we made any decisions on it. So I thought, as the chair of the committee, that it was certainly appropriate to pass it forward for a work session.
Alderman Savage?
Yes, thank you. Work sessions traditionally have been the prerogative of the council. And so anybody can request a work session on any topic. And it is our opportunity to bring in people with more experience and experts from both sides of whatever the subject may be. So there is an important role for our work sessions. And I'm not sure whether the county has first, second, and third readers on their legislation. They don't have a process like we do. So, can you speak to that?
So, at the county, first of all, unlike ours where an agenda goes up and amendments go up and everything gets loaded up into a Legistar, at the county, nothing is seen by anybody till it has been on the floor, so the ordinance is introduced, I'll just go with ordinances. It gets introduced, it simply means, you know, bill, ordinance number, blah, 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 the title is this, that's it. Then it gets advertised. A month later, there will be a public hearing. At the end of the public hearing, the, it could be the end of the night, or they could take it out of order and vote immediately. But at the end of that public hearing, the county council can either vote the ordinance up or down, or someone can introduce amendments. If there are amendments on it, the amendments go out on the floor, motion to adopt, there's a second, you know, if it's seconded, it goes to a vote. If the amendment passes at the vote, then you advertise the bill as amended. And then there's another public hearing, so someone can speak the first time on the ordinance as it was proposed. Somebody can come back and speak a second time on the ordinance as amended. If it got, then they'll call it for a vote, and it can get amended again, and you can advertise it as amended again. But you really just have introduction, which is truly just reading the title into the record. Gets advertised, then you have a public hearing, after the public hearing, you can vote.
We tried to, I think streamlined, but maybe not so much. Because originally, the first reader was automatic, we didn't bother to take a vote. And then we started taking a vote as a courtesy. Everyone would agree, because that would then give us the opportunity to debate the subject, to bring in the experts, to give us all the information we needed, so that we can then act upon it. So we've gone through several iterations of our process. But our community as a whole is very accustomed to having a voice, as we're all very well aware. And so the committees give them an opportunity to be heard, and sometimes more than once, and sometimes more than twice. This setting gives, you know, all of us an opportunity to hear the same thing at the same time, and, you know, not have to relay it. But our process is very different from the county, there's no question. And the county, the newspaper article was suggesting that we would take the county route and eliminate our committees. I'm not sure whether you had said that in your explanation to the mayor, so, anyway. But our tradition has served us as well, I think. Thank you.
So Alderman Savage, did you need that clarification still?
No, I mean, I just wanted to raise, I just want to make sure that the council's aware of the original intention from those who requested. I mean, I know a colleague from Ward 4 did request some presenters, and that's what I wanted to get a clarification on, is what their intended role was going to be, is that clash with the original intention of the committee that requested the work session? Because I want to make sure there's time, you know, because the cosponsors weren't notified about any kind of presenters or that opportunity, we thought it was just going to be a discussion amongst us. So that's where I'm just a little bit confused about how things are going to proceed. Because I want to, you know, if we're talking about inviting presenters and experts, people to question, you know, I think arguably, the time for that may be committee, but also I think we need to have time to get representation from our education commission, who has looked at this before, to get their, to have them available to ask questions and work around their schedule.
I think you, I agree that the objective was to have an unbiased discussion. However, to Shanika's point, if there was, there was some information in another committee that the presenters can speak to, perhaps, but I think a lot of it was miscommunication, I mean, perhaps. I welcome any suggestions.
All right, let's get on with it then. Mr. City Attorney, please present first item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is ID-290-18, a presentation on the stormwater rate study.
Mr. Hyder, how are you doing?
Good afternoon. My name is David Hyder, I'm with StanTech, Principal of StanTech, and... There we go. Sorry, I'll repeat that. My name is David Hyder, I'm a principal with StanTech, and I'm delighted to be here today, Mr. Mayor, and council members, to talk about the stormwater rate study. I'll take you through the study, and since this is a work session, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, discussions as we go through. Certainly doesn't have to be at the end. In terms of the agenda for the discussion, I just want to talk a little bit of background on the stormwater system and the utility that you have in place today. And we'll talk about really the two key task items of development of a financial plan for the stormwater system. And then a look at your stormwater fee structure, in terms of how you charge for stormwater currently. So by way of background, the city of Annapolis stormwater system is rather extensive. You can see some of the statistics here, it's a map that has the GIS of your current system, and some of the statistics on your current system, this isn't all of these system assets, but over an extended period of time, you've built a stormwater system that manages stormwater throughout the city. It's often important to kind of circle back, though, and think about why do we have to manage stormwater? And there's really three primary reasons that you manage stormwater. The first is flood control, property protection. Historically, that's been the number one focus, in that we want to get the roadways clear, we want to protect individual and private property. And so we need to manage the stormwater to be able to handle that. But in more recent years, water quality has become more of an issue. Obviously, we need to protect the natural environment, the key aspects of the beauty of what we have around us. So water quality's become more and more important, so nowadays, we don't necessarily want to rush it into local waterways as quickly as possible, we want to filter it and manage it, and have some infiltration if we can. So water quality's very important, and then finally, your system is regulated, your discharges to the local body water, local bodies of water are regulated under the Clean Water Act, so you do have a stormwater discharge permit that you have to meet. So a little bit more background, some recent developments. In 2016, the city did engage a consultant to develop a Stormwater Management Inventory and Watershed Improvement Master Plan, often referred to as the WIP. That study was completed in 2016, and it was completed because you knew that you had a new permit that was coming out soon for your discharges, your new Phase 2 MS4 permit. That study identified approximately $10 million worth of capital projects that need to be completed in order to comply with a new permit. And so subsequent to that, the council did approve an increase in the stormwater fee beginning fiscal year '18, where you increase the fee by about 50% to provide those additional dollars intended for the capital improvement projects. So then in April of this year, you did receive your new permit. The new permit has specific stormwater management requirements, and one of the key aspects, particularly with the capital projects, is the fact that you have to treat 20% of unmanaged impervious area within the city. And so that is in alignment with what the WIP had identified, and so now we need to move forward and essentially address these capital projects. So our specific scope of work, as I mentioned, really two key items. We developed a financial plan that examines both your current and your estimated future cost to providing stormwater in the city, incorporating those capital improvement projects. And we also have to look at how do we fund those projects going forward? Development of a financial plan that would include potential adjustments to the stormwater fees to ensure that we meet those requirements. And then the second aspect is to evaluate your current fee structure. Does it make sense, is it in alignment with current industry practice, and are there alternatives that we should examine? So I'm going to take you through each of those here briefly. The first one, the financial plan development. So similar to your, we have financial models for your water and sewer systems, we built the financial model for your stormwater system. It's essentially an Excel model that looks out over 10 years, develops your revenue requirements, so the cost of managing stormwater in the city. We began that with the fiscal year '19 budget, and then forecast that forward on a line and by line and in basis, looking at cost indices, as well as working with staff. It also incorporates the capital improvement projects identified in the WIP. So once we have a revenue requirement, we can then forecast your system revenues, which are pretty straightforward. It's just the stormwater fee currently provides your system revenues, and we can then forecast those two in comparison to each other, to see if you have sufficient revenues to meet the revenue requirements. And we can evaluate that revenue sufficiency in light of fund balances, are you able to maintain reserves within the fund, any debt service requirements? Wrong way. So in terms of the revenue requirements, so this is the fiscal year '19 budget. We have O and M expenditures of about $650,000, represents about 30% of the overall. You have a very little bit of debt service associated with your stormwater system, about 1% of $30,000. And then the vast majority of the expenditures are capital improvements, and that would be $1.5 million. Yes.
Can you give us some examples of what are in the O and M expenses?
Yeah, that would be reporting for your MS4 permit. It would be cleaning lines, cleaning catch basins, street sweeping, the ongoing maintenance activities that really are key components of meeting your regulatory permit. Would be the primary.
Okay, because we've had discussion over the years about routine maintenance of the system versus the improvements that are in the WIP. So I guess you'll, if I look at this pie chart, I can see the orange is the routine maintenance and street sweeping that, and then the blue as the funding for the watershed improvement.
Correct, exactly, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And so, so these are just estimates based on your, your research and determination of our needs. So these are just estimates in terms of cash flow and capital, how much we would need to be allocating for that use in order to meet our...
Yeah, well, so we have specific, the WIP identified specific projects, and they were prioritized. And so you're, there were capital projects in addition to the WIP that were identified for '19. So this would address a few... So this would address a few of the capital projects within the WIP, plus those additional capital projects. So they are specific projects, they're not just our estimates of what they potentially would be.
Part of that $10 million...
Yes.
...project requirement. And so, so, and so for the O&amp;M expenses, that's our total operation maintenance for that up until 2025 presumably, or is that beyond 2025?
So this is just your fiscal year 19 budgeted expenditures for O&amp;M of the stormwater system.
That they're current budgeted?
Yes.
So that doesn't take into consideration of any required maintenance associated with those capital projects?
Correct. But we do layer that in. As you start doing those projects, there will be maintenance associated with those, so it is built into our long-term forecast.
Okay, that's built in already, okay. Because I remember from our WIP, the total estimated program costs were like 20, I think around 20 million, program costs being the capital investment and all the total operation and maintenance for the whole period.
Right.
Staff costs, everything.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Attorney?
Sorry to interrupt you, but you mentioned the capital projects, the list of them. Is that available for the public to see? I mean, especially, you know, they want to know where that, that fee is going specifically. Is there something I can direct them to?
I would...
Or is that a date, is that a...
Yeah, yeah, there's...
There is a study.
We do have a report from AECOM that has all of that information in it.
Sorry, David.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. So we can, we can put that up on our website if people are interested, but it's the WIP. So it's the document that was produced by AECOM a few years ago, and we can...
I think that would be really smart, because remember a couple of years ago, I mean, when, or not a year, I mean, like a year ago, there was just a lot of distrust, lack of better word. So that would be a very good transparent thing to do. Thank you.
Director, Gerald.
Dave.
Just another question, if I may, on that. Do you have the potential, do you have the identified projects on a GIS layer anywhere that the public could go and see here's where we've...
You know, I'm not sure if we did that, if that information was ever passed back to Sean Wampler, so she could incorporate that to GIS. It would be easy enough done, because there's specific information in the WIP about where those projects are located. So we could do that as well, that would be pretty easy.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I'd like to propose that during a work session, we be provided with the projects in the WIP as well as the cost. If you recall, last year, we attempted to increase the stormwater fees significantly, far greater than the 50% that we were able to do. And if we're going to start thinking about funding this at a higher level, then we need to see the documentation to support that. So next work session or one soon enough to impact the budget for 2020, I guess it is, would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's just 19. As I mentioned, we have a financial model that forecasts going forward. So we have 19 where we're at about $2.2 million. If you just look at this chart at the top, it has the operating maintenance expenditures, which are escalated to go up, both on an inflationary level, plus the additional costs associated with maintaining the cost of maintaining the projects once they're completed. We also have the cash funded projects that are identified there within the WIP. So you can see the year-over-year, a million and a half dollars approximately. You can see you have very minimal existing debt. We can combine those two, that gives us our total capital expenditures. Then we bring together our operating and our capital. If you were to cash fund all of these capital projects, you can see you're looking at about $2.2 million a year. It goes up to 2.46, and I guess in the highest year. But year-over-year, that would be the annual revenue requirement of the stormwater system. Your current stormwater fees, as they stand today, generate $1.5 million. That's after the 50% increase that you did last year.
1.5, you said?
Yes.
So not enough.
Not enough, clearly, but with the caveat that these are, assuming you completely cash fund all these projects. In the past, you have used debt instruments to borrow for some capital projects, and that's not unusual, because the projects can have long lives and can align the payment of the project with the, with the use of it.
Alderman Finlayson?
Well, I guess my question is for Director Gerald. When we get a list of the projects, could we, that include recommendations for which ones should be capital projects or paid through capital dollars, and which ones should we continue as pay-as-you-go?
We'll certainly work with the finance director and the city manager to establish that. That's usually not our call on which ones should be, you know, how the cash is made available to us, but we'll certainly work together to develop that.
Well, but it should be clear which ones are the larger projects that would require greater funding.
And just to be clear, we're in the process of, I guess we're actually signing the contract with Greenvest now. Greenvest is going to be our design, build, operate, maintain contractor for these MS4 projects. So we consider this list of projects in the WIP, and it's in priority order, but that's a starting point for them. We're encouraging them to look at other opportunities in the city and not necessarily be wadded just to those projects. So the project list may change as we get into the Greenvest contract. We, we hope it does, because that means they'll be finding better opportunities out there than what the WIP identified. So I'm just saying that that list may change, but we'll, we'll post the list that we have now and identify which ones should be bond funded, and then it may change over time.
And I think we would understand that, that it would change as everything else changes. The company that you mentioned, would they also be seeking outside funding opportunities for us?
So we have that opportunity in the, in the contract with them. So it's actually design, build, operate, maintain, and possibly finance. But the financing that they've offered is much more expensive than the financing we can get as a city. The interest rate's much higher, because it's private financing. So I'm not sure that we would ever go that route, but that's, that's an option if we want to go that route.
I was thinking more on the line of grant opportunities.
They absolutely will be looking at grants, and they're very tied into the whole grant process, so they are going to be looking for those, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Attorney?
Yeah, I, I think I want to bring up, what is that term, parking lot issue? And this is a perfect example where it's really good that we're meeting, because, you know, the committees can sometimes be a silo where we don't know what's going on. But last, yesterday, at the economic, what, what was it, environmental? It was brought up that, a scenario, if you will, it was addressed in an MDE letter, that if we requested developers to meet the 150% requirement, and if they can't, there would be a payment in lieu of, which would go to this fund. Am I right? I mean, that's kind of a...
Possibly, that...
Yeah, I mean, it's just something, a parking lot issue to look at when we look again at the stormwater resolution. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to give you guys a little bit of focus of where we are here and what Mr. Hyder's doing. So we now have our MS4 permit, we now know what those requirements are. AECOM has, you know, had potentially come up with projects. We're working with Greenvest to see which of those projects we're going to move forward on, to get how much they're going to cost, right? So once we've identified the capital projects, or if there would be operating stuff, but the capital projects we're going to move forward with, we're going to identify what the funding sources might be, whether it's our stormwater fund, and we issue bonds and use the stormwater revenue to pay it back, whether we fund it with Pago coming out of the stormwater fund, whether we get grants, whatever it might be. We're not that far yet. So what Mr. Hyder is presenting is, based on what AECOM had initially come up with, this is kind of where the direction you can expect to go in. And if you go in this direction, you are going to need certain revenue in the stormwater fund to pay for these capital projects, and here are all the alternative ways you can structure that revenue. So that's the purpose of what we're doing today and what Mr. Hyder's presenting. So, so we will get there. You are absolutely right. All of this is part of the entire equation, we're just not there yet. And so when we are there, we're going to have to engage him again to update it based on what we, where we really are, and whatever rate structure you ultimately agree to adopt.
Will, may I?
Finlayson?
Thank you. That also include community-based projects that, you know, the community, there are several community organizations that have gotten their own funding and have done projects, but then we are responsible for the ongoing maintenance. So are those costs included, or will they be included going forward? So we get a true picture of what the cost will be for us.
So they're getting grants, so the capital costs won't be included, but the ongoing operations and maintenance will be included. And when we put together the WIP, we put together like an 80% solution that the city would fund, knowing that the other 20%, or whatever the number is, it's about 20%, I think, will be done by those, by those nonprofit organizations that are going out and getting the grants and doing great projects for us themselves with, with the grant money. So we didn't plan for 100% of the WIP, we planned for about 80% with 20% coming from those projects.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Onett?
So that, that speaks to what I wanted to ask about. I'm trying to figure out the nature of this 2.2 million, 1.8, 9.3. Is that the estimated cost of the WIP or the estimated cost for the city? I think I heard Director Gerald say that we're assuming 80% of the cost of the WIP, because as what Alderman Finlayson said, some of the projects in the WIP were entirely private. Well, they were not city. They were funded by the state and other revenue sources. So I'm trying to, because I'm looking at this gap between what we're generating, one and a half million. I mean, every year, we're falling short about a half a million dollars of having enough money for whatever this number, total stormwater expenses, represents.
Yeah, so that, that total that we have there is your operations cost today plus the WIP, and we did assume 100% of the WIP. The context that's been provided since I've been, been speaking is very helpful, because one of our, and I'll jump ahead in a moment, one of our pieces of recommendations to the city council is that this is a dynamic process and the numbers aren't solid yet, but this should give you a sense for where you need to head. And I think the, the picture is actually not, not horrible when we get to that, because you have the opportunity to, it's all going to depend on how quickly you have to execute the projects, what level of the projects do you have to do, and then the ability to use bonds and cash. And using that appropriate method, you can, you can have some pretty modest increase in the fees, which I'll get to in a second.
So just to drill down a little bit more, if I look at the second line, cash funded, is that the WIP?
Yes.
But it's 80% of what we think the total cost would be, because it's...
We use the numbers from AECOM's report, which was 100%.
So, so that would include the money from, say, St. Luke's and the project they did, which wasn't city-funded. So that could actually be an overestimate.
It could be, yes.
Yeah, all right.
Alderman Savage?
Yeah, and to that question, I think if we pass things like the known-at-law ordinance and even increase the stormwater requirements, that could bring down the cost as well. But I think it's also important to state that, it sounds like, so you've gone with exactly what AECOM, but did you, did your model include any kind of, for lack of a better word, like a buffer in terms of, because project costs more often than not end up going higher than we anticipate. Yeah, some kind of contingency. Is there contingency built into that estimate, or you just went right with the AECOM?
We went with AECOM's numbers, but we do assume that if we're doing a project in 2027, it's going to cost in 2027 dollars. So we did not add a contingency on top of, other than future dollar costs.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, the capital dollars really need to be refined, and I think they're going to be clearly refined as the contract moves forward.
Yeah, because I think, I know also with the type of, from what I recall, Director Gerald, even the type of projects in AECOM report were kind of different. I don't think they really included stream restorations, which I believe tend to be a little more expensive, so if we have to go that direction, but...
Yeah, so the AECOM cost estimates included contingency. They always do, cost estimates always like that, always include a contingency, so they included that. And just to be clear, so AECOM came up with a certain number of projects. Dave Hyder used 100% of those projects that they came up with. On top of that, they came up with another 20% that will allow us to meet the MS4, that I don't think that he took into account. He just came up with the, whatever, 16 projects that will allow us to get to that 80%. So we always assume, because we know that the nonprofits are going to continue to seek grants, are going to continue to do projects, so we're going to count on that for our MS4 compliance.
But this is just phase one, and it's the low-hanging fruit. The next expected after 2025 are going to be tougher standards to meet. Are we thinking about building any kind of reserve for ourselves when we get to the harder ones, or are we going to have to make a really big jump in the stormwater fee when we get the next level of requirements from, TMDL requirements from the federal government?
I think all that you said is true, but, but we haven't taken that next step yet, because we're still looking at this first tranja projects that are going to go through 2025. I think we'll give some good indications well before 2025, if, if they are going to take that next step and, and go to the, to the, to the next 20%. That's, that's the rumor that everybody's talking about, but, but we'll see if that's actually how it plays out.
We'll see who's president.
Just to wrap up that, that discussion, we do, obviously, this is built in the financial model that allows us to look at scenarios. So as the costs change, we can very easily plug them in in the same manner that the city looks at its water and sewer systems. We can plan for the future, we're looking out, you know, at least 10 years, and can ramp up a reserve if we need to. And that actually alludes to the next point, which is your stormwater fund balance right now at the end of 18, you had about $1.8 million in the stormwater fund. If you were to move forward with all the projects and cash fund them, essentially, we're showing that you would run out of funds, you know, because of those deficits year-over-year, by 2022, you would be out of funds. So clearly, the, the status quo, if you had to complete all the AECOM projects and cash fund them, and you don't change this stormwater fee, it's not a sustainable picture as you'd expect. Typically, we recommend you maintain at least a minimum of three months of operating expenditures within a stormwater fund balance, and so that, that's what that line is essentially there. But this is clearly not a, a sustainable picture going forward. With that said, we did develop some financial planning scenarios using the financial model, and if you did want to cash fund, and we do assume all the AECOM projects are executed over a 10-year period, you would need about 11% increase in the stormwater fee for the next three years, and then you could drop that down to 5%, and then basically down to an inflationary level after that. That's assuming you were to cash fund all the projects.
Can you define what you mean by cash fund? Is that, it looks like you're using it as something different than bond funding or debt funding.
Correct.
So this is out of current...
Current revenues, yep. So you don't go...
It's just, it's just Pago from the stormwater fund.
Right. It's Pago, not...
It's not Pago from tax dollars, it's Pago from the stormwater fund, stormwater fees.
Yep.
Is the fee increased over the existing?
Correct. 11% increase over the existing fees.
So you're saying that would be enough to...
For three years, you'd have to do 11%, 11%, 11%, and then ongoing inflationary increases after that, if you wanted to Pago fund all of those capital projects.
Gavin, hi. Yeah, very quickly, is the permit, is the MS4 permit, is it, is it reissued every X number of years, and is there any exposure in that?
Yeah, typically, they're issued every five years, but that's all predicated on how quickly EPA gets us.
And you, and that, and again, is there any about, is any exposure in not knowing what they're going to ask for in five years, or is there...
Unfortunately, that's always a risk in terms of not knowing, but generally, they'll, they'll send out an initial, some initial guidance and get feedback from communities in terms of, to give them a heads up of what's coming down the pike.
Thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Just again to confirm, so this assumes that all of our operation maintenance expenses will be covered by the, and so that, and so that includes... expenses will be covered by the, and so that, and so that includes all the associated staff?
Yep.
Okay. And so if we, okay, no, thank you.
Holdman on that.
I just wanted to note that throughout this, you're using the term fee, not rain tax?
Yeah. It's a fee, it's a user fee. So then the next, next scenarios here just show, okay, we're not going to use any PGO funds, we're going to completely bond fund all of the capital projects. That would require a five percent increase in the stormwater fee, primarily because of the fact that you'd have to meet coverage requirements. So debt service coverage on the, the new borrowing. Given the fact that you have one point eight million dollars, if we were to spend down some of that and maintain a minimum balance within the stormwater fund and bond fund some portion of the projects, so really kind of an optimal funding scenario, you could do very minimal increases in the, in the fee. So two percent a year would essentially get you there, assuming you spend down some of that, you complete those projects over a ten-year period, they're not accelerated and condensed, you could do very modest increases in, in the fees. But the financial model allows us to, to run that optimization scenario and say, well, we want to maintain this much cash, let's use up that cash and, and issue borrowing for the projects as we need them. But again, this is all predicated on what those projects look like, how quickly they need to be executed.
Holdman Finnlayson?
I feel like I should know the answer to this question, but are we currently charging sixty dollars annually for stormwater fees?
You're currently charging, yes, quarterly. So this is the quarterly fee right now for your residential customers.
Okay. Thank you.
Holdman Savage?
Yeah, I'm just getting my head around all this. So the eleven percent, that's increase over existing fee and not the fee you're, not, not one of the fees you're proposing as where we need to go, that's, so that's eleven percent over the, for each fiscal year, that's over the existing current.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And this, it's a good clarification, this is the quarterly residential fee, yep. And so to wrap this section up, and I alluded to this before, going forward, we do believe that the city's going to need to adjust the stormwater fee to meet the new permit. It's just a matter of how much, and that's going to be predicated on how quickly you complete the projects or have to complete the projects, what the projects are, and then how you fund them. So there's a, there's quite a, a number of moving parts there. If you were to look at a ten-year, if AECom is spot-on with the dollar amounts and you're doing a ten-year projection and you're comfortable using PGO and, and bonds, you could get away with pretty minimal increases in stormwater fee. It's important to realize that you did increase the stormwater fee fifty percent, so you are starting from a higher level than you were in the past. That's why I believe that you can come in and, and look at inflationary increases. However, if the AECom projects were understated, or if you need to complete them in a shorter period of time, you know, that, that goes out the window to some degree. But again, this, this really serves as somewhat forecasting in the future, but it's hard to do until we know those numbers exactly.
Holdman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just something on this, might, might be for Director Gerald, but I'm kind of curi-, it just makes me think of Alderman Tierney, or I'm sorry, Finnlayson suggested we get a report on the, the projects that AECom proposed. But I'm also kind of thinking now about the operation and maintenance. I know AECom came up with a price tag on the operation and maintenance, but I'm kind of curious what that entails. For example, with these increase in projects, you know, we talked about yesterday about needing more mat waters, more stormwater engineers, does, does the increase in costs that they're estimating include the necessary, possibly necessary increase in staff, staffing, I should say? And if, if so, I think that might be helpful to know at the same time in a future work session.
Yeah, that, and that's a good question. So it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't address the, the scenario that we talked about yesterday of, of getting involved earlier in the, in the development process and having additional stormwater engineers to do that. It, it really just includes Matt and, and Charles Brown on, on my side, and then on, you know, sort of the, the plan review and the inspection side. I have a stormwater crew within utilities, so includes them. So as we, as we implement these projects, we, we in AECom estimate what the cost was going to be to maintain these, to properly maintain these, so that's all included as well. A lot of that work hasn't been done in the past to, to properly maintain these, both on the private side and the public side. So AECom included costs that, that reflect what it's really going to be required to do the, do the maintenance of these facilities.
So is that with existing staff or...
Well, we're going to have to grow staff, yeah. The three people I have right now, they're doing, it won't be enough as we start building new projects.
Okay.
So that was all included.
Okay. Yeah, that, that would definitely be important to know as part of...
And we also have Greenvest available to do some of that, and because they're, they're going to be a twenty-year, you know, teammate of ours, part of the team.
And they'll be taking care of the maintenance, I think, if our call...
Of at least the, the facilities that they build, and we could, and we could use them for other facilities as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to shift gears and talk about the stormwater fee structure. And since this is not a rain tax, it's a, a user fee, we want to make sure that it's predicated on the use of the system. And so when you think about stormwater fees, they're generally based on impervious surface because as you increase your impervious surface, you increase the runoff that's generated from the property. So stormwater fees are typically based on some measure of impervious surface, which is a potential contribution to the system, which represents the potential use of the system. And so that's very common. When we look at your current fee structure, as it stands right now, you really have two buckets of customers. You have your residential customers, which includes single-family condos and apartments. They are all charged fifteen dollars per quarter or sixty dollars a year, and that is, that charge is per unit. So if you're a single-family home, you pay fifteen dollars a quarter. If you're a, an apartment unit, you pay fifteen dollars a quarter. On the non-residential side, which is everybody else, it's a tiered structure based on your actual measured impervious surface. So up to five thousand square feet, you pay sixty, then five thousand to ten thousand, you pay double that, and then once you're over ten thousand square feet of impervious, you're at one ninety-five per quarter.
Holdman Savage?
Question about the charge per unit. He said, i.e., one apartment unit is fifteen dollars, so that's one, I'm thinking, what the, the unit is one individual dwelling unit, or is it the entire...
No, it's one unit.
Each building, one, okay, it's one dwelling.
So if I'm on an apartment complex with twenty apartment units, they pay twenty times fifteen dollars a quarter.
And that, that gets charged to, I guess, the apartment owner?
Water right.
And not the, yeah, owner of the water bill, so that doesn't go to the residents themselves?
Mm-hmm. I think in some instances, it does go to the residents, if you have individual...
I mean, they probably, the cost eventually probably gets passed along to them.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
So some observations just about the current structure. While it's fairly common to, to handle single-family customers or residential homeowners all the same, to have the same fee, it's certainly less common to have that for multifamily. And one of the reasons why that's less common is because there are potential equity concerns. If we think about the fact that a single-family home pays the same as somebody in a, you know, a one, an efficiency apartment, there's, you know, potentially some equity concerns there. So that's one, one consideration. And then the other consideration is on the non-residential side, given your current structure, you essentially cap the amount that anybody would pay. So your structure, if I jump back a moment, if you have a hundred thousand square feet of impervious, you pay the same as somebody that has eleven thousand square feet of impervious. And so there's some issues potentially there with the contributions to the system. A large impervious lot that has a hundred thousand square feet of impervious can contribute a, a heck of a lot more stormwater to your system than somebody with eleven thousand square feet. And so those are our two, two primary findings. One way to address that and to bring you more in alignment with what we typically see around the country, to align you somewhat with, with how the county charges, would be it essentially charge all your single-family properties the same fee, and those single-family properties would be essentially established as your base unit, or what's often called your equivalent residential unit, or ERU. So when we look at the single-family properties in the city of Annapolis, the average impervious surface is sixteen hundred square feet. And so if we set that as our base unit, say, one ERU, then for non-single-family properties, we could charge them based on their actual impervious surface as multiples of ERUs. So I have an example here just to show you. If we have a non-single-family parcel, it's got sixteen thousand square feet of impervious, and our per ERU is sixteen hundred square feet of impervious, that parcel is essentially ten ERUs. So it's ten equivalent single-family homes. And if our fee is fifteen dollars a quarter, this individual parcel would pay a hundred and fifteen dollars, I'm sorry, a hundred and fifteen dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars a quarter, because they're multiples. This is by far the most common approach. In the industry, you would treat apartment complexes in the, the same manner. You'd take their total impervious for the apartment complex and calculate the number of ERUs they would, would be associated with that apartment.
So if I'm understanding the drift, you would lower the multifamily or the apartment unit from fifteen dollars to some item less than that?
Yes.
Is that going to have a tendency to shift the burden both to individual families and to commercial properties?
Well, you're right. It depends, well, it depends parcel by parcel. So if you were a, an apartment complex that had, I don't know, ten units, but had a lot of impervious surface, you could end up paying more because it's now based on their actual measurement of impervious versus fifteen dollars per unit. But what's interesting is, what this table shows is the number of billable units under your current approach, and then the number of billable units under the alternative approach. And so in most instances, yes, apartments would pay less because when you look at their actual impervious, so you can see residential, the category would, would be reduced in terms of the number of billable units. But non-residential would grow because we're now basing it, we're no longer capping it, and we're basing it on actual measurements of impervious. What's interesting, though, is the total number is not much different. So what we'll often see in a community that has a fee structure like this is we'll go in and we'll say, well, if we charge a dollar per ERU under your current approach, you're going to generate twenty-four thousand dollars. Under your alternative approach, you're going to generate twenty-five thousand dollars. Some communities, when you go in and you make this shift, they get a huge increase in revenues. That's not the case here in Annapolis because of the way that the numbers fall out. And I, I know it's somewhat complex, so I'm hoping that, that makes sense.
But one of the things I was thinking about when you were doing this a few minutes ago is the single-family units with the yards have other mitigation kinds of things that they can do, like rain barrels on their downspouts and rain gardens and things like that, which I think under the current code, we have a thing to incentivize them to do that, which I, I'm not sure is built in to this. It's assuming they're all paying the same thing, they're not mitigating. I'm not sure the same kind of mitigation is available to apartments or commercial buildings because they tend to have pretty much all impervious surface. I suppose they can do the rain barrel, and I guess they can do cisterns if they want to make the investment in rain gardens too, in their parking lots. But I'm, I'm trying to think about how, the ultimate objective is to keep water out of the storm drains and out of the bay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there was nothing, there's nothing to preclude you from changing a credit program or how you, you handle that. You're right, in terms of potentially apartment complexes have less opportunity to, to mitigate their contribution. But I think what's somewhat telling is, is this chart here, and, and this shows all of the various property types in the city. It shows the total number of properties, and then it shows the average bill under the current approach, and then the average bill under the alternative approach. And it's important to note that when, up at the top line where it says apartment, that's for the entire apartment building. So they're, they're currently paying about a hundred and fifty dollars per quarter under this approach. Based on their measured impervious, they would actually pay less. But as you scroll down the list, you can see the schools, not public, the schools, county, they would pay substantially more because they're getting the benefit of that cap right now. The maximum they pay is a hundred and ninety-five dollars a quarter, even though they may have, you know, thousands and thousands of square feet of impervious. And that's really the fundamental shift that's happening. Given that shift, if the city were to move forward with this, we would strongly advise you to reach out to those that are going to be impacted substantially.
Holdman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I do kind of question to piggyback on what, what Marne is saying. So when we calculate our impervious surface, or how much cover, what the coverage is for these properties, we're using, I believe, our, presumably our GIS department to calculate that, but I, I think it's kind of a good question in terms of how, one, how often are we going to be, and, and you may not have factored, you probably just factored in one straight number, but we'll figure out how often we want to recalculate the impervious surface to catch improvements if somebody did happen to remove a, a driveway. But two, I'm wondering how we factor in things like if an apartment complex were to put in permeable pavers, which on aerials would probably still show up as impervious surface, but we want to have, we want to work in some kind of mechanism where they can get credit for that coverage.
Yeah, and generally, what's done is some type of appeals process where you, you put the onus on the property to come in and file an appeal and say, there's going to change on my property, I've removed impervious. You're generally, people are going to be incentivized to do that if they, you can also piggyback it on your building permit process, just if somebody adds a structure, you can capture it that way. Most communities do a total refresh of their impervious maybe every three, three to four years. The city's just got a refresh of its impervious area in September of this year. So this study does not incorporate that yet, so that would also need to be factored in as you move forward. But also, as you become potentially more equitable, you may want to consider expanding your credit program in terms of offering more credits to commercial, in terms of if they're truly mitigating stormwater off their property, you can offer stormwater mitigation credits, and that's very common.
But do you have any information on that in here about what other jurisdictions have done for credit programs?
I don't have it in here, but I can certainly provide it.
Okay. That'd be good, yeah.
Yep.
What does a single-family home pay in the county? Is it more than sixty dollars?
Yes, it's eighty-five dollars.
Eighty-five dollars in the county?
Yeah, that's why you want to live in the county.
So in this structure, it's very similar to the county. It's a little bit different, and the, the county has obviously more, more rural areas, so they have to account for vaster parcels with less impervious. And, and so there's, there's factors in some zoning classifications and things like that, but generally, single-family are all treated the same, and when it comes to a commercial parcel, they're going to be based on their actual impervious surface. So I will wrap up and just say that, you know, our recommendation, we do think that there's some things you could do to make the fee structure more equitable. What we've seen around the country is, as people have to raise their fees, the, the community at large will start to ask questions. And if you can get out in front of that and say, you know, this is the most equitable way, we're doing it based on contributions, that may help mitigate that. And then going forward, again, assuming, a lot of assumptions on capital needs and how you execute it, it looks like you could do fairly modest increases in the fees.
Holdman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just looking at the list of, of structures, Housing Authority makes me think about, I don't even know how the fee is currently assessed on such properties, because my, my colleague Ward, four...
Three.
Just said, I mean, six, has just said that the units listed on this in terms of total properties may be off, but then I'm, I'm not even sure how we charge that fee to those properties at this point. I don't know if anybody can shed any light on that.
I think they're charged per unit, but I, I think they're treated similar to how you treat your residential.
Okay.
But I, there's certainly, this is based on some, some dated GIS information, so there, as the new... But I, there's certainly, this is based on some dated GIS information, so as the new data is processed, there'll be greater clarity on that, but.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yeah, did I, did you actually, did you say that all of these entities are actually paying now?
Yes, that is our understanding.
County government, state government, school system are all paying stormwater fees to us? Okay.
Yeah, I think the same thing for the county, too. The county, didn't they chat, they talked about exempting churches at one point, but I don't think they agreed to that.
Well, they, I think they charge them a dollar. They effectively exempted them.
Oh, they did? Everybody else, though, pays.
And we can provide the data behind these property types. It was pretty, these are the property types from the GIS database, so, and the billing system, so it's our understanding that these are all billed, yes.
Yeah, I have a question. The county did an exemption for nonprofits. I don't think they did an exemption for governments.
Not for governments, but I thought they did. Didn't they do churches, just to set them at a dollar, pretty sure?
I don't know. I don't think so.
I don't know if they went through with that. I remember them talking about it.
Alderman Finlayson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How do we account for city buildings? Is that accounted for in here?
Yeah, most communities would charge themselves.
Say that again.
Most communities would charge themselves. Yeah, because you're contributing. And they'll often handle that in that, you know, it's a charge, and maybe reduce the services that are provided from the general fund would be, you know, accounting specifically for that would be one way to address it, but most communities do, and I believe, I'm pretty sure the county does. Do you recall? It's the county charges themselves?
Yeah. Well, I don't know, because of the county, because here it's an enterprise fund, with the county, it's not.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they do.
Alderman Savage?
I wanted to say thank you. This is a very thorough report, and I like how you did look at the equity end of things, because I know that that's certainly one thing that's been on my mind, is making it more equitable, so thank you.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks very much, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Really informative.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is legislation for discussion, beginning with O-8-18, Adequate Public Facilities.
All right, if anyone would like to come forward. Maybe just Sally and.
Pete Gutwold, Director of Planning and Zoning, I'm not, it is now. Here for questions, I guess, I mean, this.
I, yeah, you can give me some background if you want.
Yeah, maybe some of the sponsors can speak to this. The adequate public facilities for school legislation was clearly an attempt to make sure that we have adequate school facilities for the children, not have all of the temporary buildings and overcrowded situations. The current legislation was an attempt to bring the city in line with the county. Initially, the county had talked about moving the legislation to ninety-five percent. They subsequently changed it to a hundred percent. We had, at the Rules Committee, we had testimony from Alex Stiknovich, who's here talking to us about that. I won't put words in his mouth, because he can speak to it himself, but it seems that we ought to be consistent with the county. Actually, in my view, and I'll only ascribe this to myself, it'd be nice if we could work together, the city and the county, to approach the school board, to talk about the adequacy of facilities, that we will then, all three entities turn around and approach the state, which is the school system belongs to, to talk about proper level of funding for facilities. And it just seems like we ought to be, we, the city, ought to be in lockstep with the county in terms of our requirements for the adequate public facilities for schools. So the amendment changes the adequacy standard to, from a hundred and twenty percent initially to ninety-five, and now to one hundred percent occupancy for high school. I can't remember now, but I think we're pretty much leaving alone elementary and middle school. But whatever we're doing, we're recommending that our standards be the same as the county's standards.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, yeah, just to work off of that, so our current code does have, it's a hundred percent threshold capacity for elementary, and I think it's a hundred, a hundred percent as well for middle schools, and then it jumps up to a hundred and twenty percent for high school. So that's the current code, current thresholds. The county is currently at ninety-five percent for all three of those schools. However, they're, and Alex may want to correct me if I'm wrong, but that sunsets, that ninety-five, ninety-five, ninety-five sunsets after a certain amount of period, I think after they developed their general development plan. So they have an opportunity to set new numbers, or it reverts back to a hundred, not back to, it reverts to a hundred percent, a hundred percent, a hundred percent. And so what we're proposing is to, the ordinance says ninety-five percent for everything. However, in Rules and Government, we did talk a lot about this, and as Alderman Arnett said, we ended up recommending keeping the hundred percent for elementary, keeping the hundred percent for middle, but then also keeping a hundred percent for, but reducing the hundred twenty to a hundred, to a hundred percent for the high school. So that's a little more than the proposed in the ordinance, ninety-five percent, we're proposing that a hundred percent. And so, again, the rationale was just to try to match what the county is doing. And we did talk about just simply referencing the county code to always keep step with what they're doing, but the more we got into that, that really didn't quite work, because we have other provisions that Director Gutwold uses to calculate whether or not developments are in compliance and what the capacity is. So to keep it simple, we just simply changed the percentages. And so if the county does change it in the future, we may need to revisit this. However, so I think some of the justification, I think, to have this conversation here, some of the things we do need to decide is if we wanted any kind of, because currently there is no carve-out in the legislation. There's no exemption. So I think that's part of the discussion people may want to have, is do we want to have a carve-out for affordable housing? Do we want anything for specific growth areas? Or, you know, the county did make a kind of a carve-out for parole town center, and, but they had a lot of restrictions with that. They could only get that exemption if the units were kept small, in the sense that I think they had to be restricted to, like, certain bedrooms, a certain number of bedrooms and that kind of thing, just to make it clear that they want those units to have as low of an impact on school capacity as they can. So those are just some of the things I think sponsors are certainly, I think, willing to have that discussion about how to adjust and amend the underlying ordinance, but I think the need, and that's why I think at some point, I think it would be good to hear from the Education Commission in terms of, they did look at this, when the council looked at this two, three years ago, they did also get some comments from Education Commission, and I'd kind of be curious to hear what their thinking is on this. But I know there are certain, we've all been contacted by the parents and teachers who have concerns about the school capacity, and so I think we need to do something, and so this is our first attempt at, well, second attempt, I guess, at trying to do something to address this.
Alderman Arnett?
The other thing that the council should discuss, and maybe Alex can help us with this, the high school is different than the elementary or middle schools in that it has special programs, the IB and all the other special programs, and there are people who go to Annapolis High School that are not from the city, and they raise the enrollment. The Education Commission talked about this, and I don't know the veracity of it, but there are also reverse flows of people who are, who would have gone to the Annapolis High School that are going to other schools. I was told they about net out. I don't know the reality of that, but that is something that, to the extent that the capacity for the high school is affected by people who are coming from outside the city, it's not clear that we want to stop other aspects of city, like new development or redevelopment, because external forces are kicking us beyond the trigger point. So I think we need more information on that. And I also think, if it is the case that those, that sort of phenomenon is happening, I think we need to have some kind of recourse to talk to the school board, saying, you know, you're loading up Annapolis High School with these special programs, which are drawing from outside the city, is there a way you can reallocate to other high schools, so you don't put that burden on the school? And burden in the first order sense of burden on having more students there than the building has the capacity to handle, the second burden would be triggering impacts on development within the city. And so I think that's another aspect, and again, Alex or the Education Commission or somebody else from the school board could talk to us about that.
And the high school's not slated for any kind of expansion anytime soon, is it? So it's all out of our hands.
They just had an expansion within the last three or four years, four years, for the PVA, which is the Performing and Visual Arts, and Alex can come up and speak for himself.
Make sure we didn't misinterpret any information we thought we heard from him.
But I'd like to clarify one thing. The Education Commission took a position in opposition to this initial legislation several years ago, and while there was discussion at the last meeting last month, no position was taken by them, yes. And understand, the Education Commission is not made up of professionals. These are volunteers who, in some cases, have kids in our public schools, in most cases, actually. So, but, expansion of Annapolis High School.
Yes, ma'am. For the record, Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer, Annapolis High School was expanded rather significantly with both classroom space and specialized performance basis support to new performing visual arts program. That's been completed about four years ago, so it's been occupied for three years. This is the fourth academic year now.
And what capacity are we at now?
Annapolis High School has a state-rated capacity currently of two thousand and eighty-six students, after the expansion.
And where does that put us in terms of percentage?
It, so it's, projected enrollment this year would be two thousand and ninety-nine, so it would be just over a hundred percent. So it's right on the verge. The issue is really, there is continued growth, so it is expected to keep trickling north. And just so I can get the underlying numbers correct for everybody, the ordinance that the county has had for, going back to at least two thousand and five, was that a project, so we're talking about subdivisions, so this is raw land that's going to be subdivided for new dwelling units. So each level of school to which the subdivision would feed, so the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school needs to be below a hundred percent of capacity, of state-rated capacity for the project, to be able to go forward and be vested for schools at either the sketch plan approval or the final plan approval. The council did recently amend that ornament, ordinance, it had been in place since at least '05, and temporarily, it has been reduced now, so it's a hundred percent at the high schools, ninety-five percent at the elementary schools, and ninety-five percent at the middle schools. That new level, the hundred ninety-five, ninety-five, will remain in effect until either the end of 2019, December of 2019, or the adoption of the county's new general development plan, absent any other action by the county council. After one of those two dates, it will revert back to a hundred, a hundred, and a hundred.
Alderman Terry?
Yeah, okay, so the objective, I assume, is to address potential overcrowding of schools. So I'm just being devil's advocate here, I want to understand why, what is then our objective, to make our classifications more stringent than the county's? That would be, mean then that we would be limiting development in the city? It would be a development issue, because the, we don't have any more say than the county on the, on the schools, but we can just act independently from the county on feeding them? Just, just want to know how this works, if we're different than the county, if we're more strict, if we're, if.
Is that a question for us?
Yeah, it's for you, Pete, yeah, it's for you, yeah.
Looking at me, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
So the way that we.
Yeah, go ahead. How would this work?
Each jurisdiction has their own, you know, has their own, you know, it's home rule, we have our own authority to regulate through zoning and, you know, regulation, adequate public facilities. So we're just addressing this through Title 22, saying, okay, what is our standard to allow development to proceed? It is all related to the adequate public, the certification for adequacy. So you have a number of different facilities that you go through, schools is one of those last.
Police and fire.
Yes, exactly. So you set a standard associated when you allow the impacts from a development that has, you know, when a development is being proposed, what are the impacts associated with each one of those facilities? And you assess that against that type of development. So for the city, you can adopt whatever standard you want, same as the county, and other counties have different standards associated with different facilities. So under Title 22 for the city of Annapolis, we have established all those standards, schools being, and remember, it's a projection, it's a hundred percent or a hundred, a hundred and five percent or a hundred and twenty percent three years out. So if the school is, is or projected to be over that capacity, then we would not allow development to proceed. They would go on a conditional review, or they just wouldn't proceed at all.
So then it does address development, basically?
Yes, specifically to address the, the, what's that called?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's more.
The nexus between that development and the impact to the public facility.
Yeah.
But just to be clear, our current city ordinance is more lax or liberal than the counties?
Yeah, I understand that.
So I think the discussion that we had in the small task group or work group was the pros and cons of, in lieu of having the city standards be more lax or liberal than the counties, is are there benefits of having them aligned?
Oh, okay. So I missed, I missed that discussion. That probably was a good discussion. Can you recap?
Yeah, so just, yeah, so the, so again, just to make sure we all have the numbers right, for a high school, the city is currently closed at one twenty, and the county's closed at a hundred. That's today. For an elementary school, today, the city's closed at one oh five, the county is today closed at ninety-five, but it will revert back to a hundred, which was the old rule. And for middle schools, today, the city is closed at one oh five, the county is closed at ninety-five temporarily, it will revert back to a hundred. So in all three cases, the city's standards are slightly or marginally looser than the counties.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Alex to clarify something, just to make sure everybody is on, understands? I'm going to use a hundred as the guideline, but if a school, let's say the capacity was a thousand and it had nine hundred and fifty kids, it would be open at both the county and the city.
1,000 and it had 950 kids, it would be open at both the county and the city level if that development was going to put 100 kids in there. So the school is, on the chart, it's open, but that development is going to put it over. The county would not allow that development, correct?
Under its current ordinance, that's correct.
Okay. So it's not just that, is the school open when you submit your development? If your development is going to put it over, then your development isn't approved?
Right. The, the old version of the code, Ms. Sutherland, was binary. If there was one seat open, you could still put 100 youngsters into it.
Right.
But there's been a refinement to that county's process now, so there's a mathematical computation that the Planning and Zoning Office does to make sure the new development will fit into that school.
Thank you.
Hold on, Ms. Finlayson?
Mr. Zakhnovich, can you tell us about the process that the county uses to give exemptions to jurisdictions or to communities to get around, and I hate to use that term, but to circumvent the adequate facility?
So there's only, so all of the counties basically is applicable to the adequate public facilities ordinance. They do have a couple areas that they have targeted as, as targeted growth areas. The parole town center being one that was just referenced here recently. And so there are some provisions. They are generally exempt from APFO, but if a project, so here in the Mills parole growth management area, or parole town center growth management area, they would permit a project to go forward. There's a number of requirements. One is that none of the dwelling units be more than three bedrooms or explicitly prohibited. 50 percent or greater of the units need to be either studio apartments or one-bedroom apartments. The remaining balance can be two-bedroom apartments. There are a number of other requirements. It has to have structured parking. It has to be mixed-use development, including both residential, commercial, and industrial. I already explained the dwelling unit configuration. It has to have bicycle, pedestrian, and transit infrastructure, so it's a multimodal transportation-type environment. The project has to include improvements to conveyance, including roadway capacity and vehicular traffic associated with the impact in a parole town area, and vehicle access cannot be from or onto a scenic or historic roadway. So there are exemptions. Again, I just described those here for the parole town center growth man, management area, but they do come with strings attached to allow those projects to go forward. And essentially, the thinking is, is that we know from experience, one-bedroom or studio-type multifamily dwelling units typically do not yield a large number of children. We have data to demonstrate that. Conversely, three-bedroom units do in fact yield. That's, you know, the type of families that we'll be looking for, you know, three-bedroom units typically are those with youngsters in a household. And so the county has structured the APFO exemption in a way that sort of buffers the impact of a new residential dwelling unit project in the Mills growth area versus how many youngsters are going to be coming out of it.
That's new legislation. Did it just pass on Monday night?
It just, it did. It passed by the council this past Monday.
Prior to that legislation that was introduced by Chris Trumbauer.
Correct.
Parole, Glenberne, and Odington, I believe, were the three growth management areas.
Parole, Glenberne, and BWI.
And BWI, that were exempt from the adequate facilities, which means they could put any type of development in those communities. For example, if you look at the parole area, what is going on or what has been built on between Reva Road and Route 2 and behind the Double T Diner, there's any number of developments that came online because parole was exempt from the APF.
Yes, ma'am.
But the new legislation allows development, but restricted to a certain targeted audience, let's just say.
Correct. It, it refined a more liberal exemption and put some qualifiers on it.
Is that also applicable to the other two areas, BWI and Glenberne?
At the present, it is not.
It's not. So it just targets the Annapolis area. I'm going to ask you for some information. I know you don't have, but for the sake of everyone here. I had asked for data indicating how many students at Annapolis High School are not Annapolis residents. If we're talking about legislation that's going to impact the city, we should be looking at Annapolis residents. And at the last, I guess, Rules Committee, Director Gutwall had come up with 14 percent of the kids attending Annapolis High School are not Annapolis residents. Now, he's going to explain to Mr. Zakhnovich how he came up with that number. But I also asked Mr. Zakhnovich today to provide us with how much, how many, what percentage, let's just say, of kids are Annapolis students that are going elsewhere. I know our chairperson for the Education Commission had raised the question. How many kids are going to South River for STEM and going elsewhere for, I know there are some PVA kids that are going to Broadneck, for example. So we need to really look at what our population is that we're dealing with, how many kids are coming in from elsewhere and are counted in our numbers, and how many kids are going elsewhere that are not counted in our numbers. So that information will be forthcoming.
Can I ask, can I ask one point of clarification? Is that there are currently nine elementary schools that feed into Annapolis Senior High School?
That was my next question.
Eight, eight of them are within the city. One of them are not within the city, that being Roland Knolls.
Roland Knolls, yeah. So how do, how should we look at those, that school particularly?
I was clarifying. You asked me for some data, and I wanted to ask you how you wanted me to calculate the Roland Knolls youngsters.
What percentage of kids at Roland Knolls are Annapolis residents? Just for numbers' sake. But I thought you were going to ask about the school closings, because isn't it accurate that if Annapolis High School is closed, all of our schools are closed?
Yes, ma'am. So again, the, it's a hierarchy. So if the high school is closed, by default, the area, the feeder system, so the geographic area, so even if the elementary or middle school is open, if the high school's closed, everything underneath of it is closed. Conversely, if only one of the nine elementary schools was closed, but the middles and high schools were open, this is a hypothetical, only that elementary school zone would be closed, but the rest of the entire feeder zone would still remain open.
Okay, and that's significant as far as our APF is concerned. How do you calculate the carve-outs? No, that's not my, my question at all. How do you predict that we will be able to communicate with the Board of Ed and the county to advocate for additional schools? I, I know that's a convoluted question, but I heard my colleague say, you know, what we really need to be doing is sitting down with the school board, and thus the county, who does our funding, to talk about adequate schools. And you and I know the challenge that poses, but on the surface, it sounds like a great idea, that we should just all sit down and talk about it and come up with a plan. But if you've been watching the school system, like some of us have, you know how long it takes to convince the board and the county, and the state for that matter, to fund new schools. I mean, Crofton is coming online, and what has it taken, 20 years for the Crofton School? At least 15 years, that I recall, of advocating for that school. And finally, with the right political atmosphere, they're getting a new school in Crofton. We haven't gotten a new school in the city of Annapolis in probably the same amount of years. Many of our schools have been renovated, many of our schools have been renovated, and their numbers, as you can read, are still pretty high, for the most part. I think there's probably one that has lots of capacity. Anyway, I want us to look at all of the details and all of the facts as we're making this decision, because it sounds great to sit down and have a discussion, but the reality is that those discussions will not reap the type of benefit we want to see. At the same time, we're hamstringing ourselves with opportunities in the city, and I just want us to be fully aware of those, of what we're doing. So, thank you.
Room attorney?
Thank you. So, so you might have, let me ask it this way. When you do proposed enrollment, right, every proposed enrollment, you go 18, 2009, 18, 2019, 2020, proposed enrollment by each school, well, what are your assumptions? I mean, where are those kids coming from? There has to be assumptions made on where the kids are from and what, what, what are you assuming is the adequate facilities? I mean, is it constant, or what's going on there?
Sure. So the capacity is driven, let's begin with that. The capacity is driven by a, a formula developed by the state of Maryland that's applied equally across all 24 jurisdictions. So it's a rigid rubric to arrive at the state rated capacity, that the state then comes and audits the capacity of the building. So that's a pretty structured number. In terms of its, so the actual enrollment, let's start out with there. So each and every September 30th of the year, we do a, a audit. It's a canvas that counts every actual individual that's within the school as of September 30th of every year. It's done, again, a very specific exacting way that's required by the state, and then the state comes and audits the September 30th actual enrollments to verify whether they are correct or not, and then the state certifies them. So that's how we get the actual enrollments. The project, the projected enrollments, then, is a combination of a number of factors. So to begin with, we start out by what's called, called grade level succession. So if you're a third grader, you will next year be a fourth grader, or if you're a sixth grader, you're going to be a seventh grader. But we know that there's attrition. So we know statistically how many third graders wind up being fourth graders, or where we transition maybe from ninth, from eighth grade to ninth grade, we may be losing youngsters to private high schools, things like that. So they call it grade level, grade level succession, but it is de-rated for statistically how many youngsters we lose. So that's a grade level rollover. We also take into account subdivision and development, so we work with builders. So for example, a, a builder may have a large project that has 200 dwelling units, but they're not going to construct and immediately occupy all 200 dwelling units in that very first year. So we talk to the developers, and we get what we call their build-out schedule, is what we use. They predict that they're, of the 200, they'll say, okay, we're going to be building 40 a year. And so for each of the next five years, it's 200 units, for each of the next five years, we're going to bring on 40, 40 dwelling units a year. We know how many statistically, how many youngsters we get at each of the grade levels, elementary, middle, and high, from each, from a development, from each dwelling unit within a development. So we will spread that development out 40 a year for the next five years. We get records from the health department about mortality rates at each age between 0 and 21, so we know statistically how, the mortality rate of our youngsters, so it's de-rated for that. And then finally, in migration and out migration, we get data on, in between counties, in migration and out migration, that we account for. The toughest thing that, the toughest prediction is turnover. So that's the toughest prediction. And that is where you'll have a household and maybe a, a couple that had children at one time, but now they've matriculated, they've moved out or gone off to college or whatever, and you have two adults in a household, and those two adults decide to sell that household. So who's going to buy that household? Is it going to be another single adult or another couple of adults that either don't have children, or is it going to be a family with childbearing age? And maybe they have one, two, or three children to come with them. That is the toughest dynamic. I mean, we know, we deal with the registrar, so we get real-time data. Our computer systems are continuously updated, so as children enroll, not just from September 30th, they continue to roll all year, or they disenroll all year because they either move in or they move out. We monitor that and allow that on a predictive basis to help us gauge that turnover. So if we are seeing a, a area where there's not a lot of growth and development, here in Annapolis, you do not have a lot of growth and development. You do not have, unlike the county, large parcels of land that are farmland and being converted over to development, or large parcels of trees that are being taken down, and huge acreages of townhouses or multifamily developments. So you do not have as much of that new ground-up construction. You have more of this turnover kind of phenomenon. And again, we monitor at that school level what that dynamic is, and it can be very different. We do it at the schoolhouse level, because you can have a very different turnover dynamic in one, one part of the Annapolis feeder system versus another part.
So you're not at the, you're not at the point where you'd be able to develop an algorithm or correlation between the percentages and what that would do? It sounds like you're pretty sophisticated on your sort of linear analysis. I just, I mean, it's...
We can pretty, we can pretty accurately, you know, model things.
But I mean, the impact of this legislation in, like, going, changing percentages of capacity, if you, I don't, I don't think you can.
Well, current, I mean, currently, the only, currently, the only school that is clo, that would, all your schools in Annapolis are, in the city of Annapolis are open on your current legislation.
Right.
If you went to 100 on everything, mathematically, the only school that would be closed would be Annapolis Senior High School.
The high school, yeah.
But because of this hierarchical system, even though the middle and elementary schools underneath of it would be mathematically open because of the hierarchical system, the fact that a high school becomes closed, it then closes the areas underneath of it.
It's the last question, but as far as the, the kids coming in, contributing the county versus the city, what, what are those numbers percentage-wise?
I, I don't have that. That's the information that Ms. Finlayson asked for.
Is that what she'll ask in a different way? Yes, okay.
So, so yeah, we, I mean, Annapolis Senior High School has two different magnet, magnet programs. They have an international baccalaureate program, and they have a performance visual arts magnet program. And magnet programs can accept students from, in the case of the PVA program, can accept students from the entire county. In terms of the magnet program, that's the IB, the International Baccalaureate, it accepts students from four of our 12 high schools. So those are inbound, right? But again, don't assume that they're all external to Annapolis. The vast majority of the students in both of those programs are Annapolis High School students anyway. They would have been anyway, even if it would have been a comprehensive, traditional high school. They just happen to be an Annapolis Senior High School student who is also in a PVA program. But yes, we do have students that come from other, from our other 11 schools into Annapolis. Likewise, there are children that are in the Annapolis Senior High School attendance area. They would have gone there, but they've elected to go to magnet schools elsewhere, and that's the data that Ms. Finlayson asked for, and will be glad to, glad to provide that.
So, one last question, sorry. When, when are trailers introduced? Is that at 95, or, you know, when we're, when we look at trailers, is that over 100, or?
So... So portables, relocatables, or trailers?
Oh, sorry.
Or learning cottages, whatever you call them? So they don't count towards...
Construction terms, sorry.
They don't count towards capacity at all. So under the, the state's algorithm, they do, they do not at all count towards the state rated capacity, whether it is or isn't. If a building becomes overcapacity in terms of either the number of youngsters, and the building can no longer hold them, then we begin to put portable classrooms or learning cottages outside, or it could be put out there to support a specific kind of program. So it can either be, either be there for programmatic reasons or for capacity reasons, but in both cases, it actually does not artificially drive up the state rated capacity of the building, because the state rated capacity discounts whether you do or you do not have a portable classroom there.
Hold on, Ms. Pindell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Alex, thank you so much. Question, is there reason why on this listing, Monarch Academy is not on here?
So Monarch's a contract school. Monarch withdraws... Monarch withdraws students out of the nine elementary schools in the Annapolis feeder district. It's in the, I mean, it is in our master plan. This, this piece of paper is yours. It's the City Planning and Zoning Office.
Okay.
I mean, Monarch is under capacity. So in the, in the county's APFO ordinance, contract schools and charter schools are not counted in terms of being governed by the APFO ordinance per se. So APFO, Adequate Public Facility Ordinance applies to 125 public schools, not to our two charter schools or contract schools. And again, they serve to draw down the number of students that are in our government-owned public school facilities.
So everyone in Monarch would have either gone to one of the other nine schools?
Almost everyone in Monarch. Except for this year, there's some students that are from outside of the Annapolis feeder district. But the vast preponderance of students are from the nine elementary schools that are assigned to the Annapolis feeder district.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Woman Finlayson?
Yes, I'm trying to find a picture from the Education Commission presentation in September, where we were presented by the area director, who's no longer called that. There are five or six different programs within Annapolis High that pulls from other schools.
ROTC would be another one. It's a very small program.
ESOL?
ESOL, potentially, that.
And I can't remember, but.
But again, I'll be happy to disaggregate that information for you.
Okay, that'd be great. My other question has to do with the, the growth in the city. And Pete, Mr. Gutwall, this is for you also. The last time we dealt with this legislation, we looked at how much the city had grown compared to how much our school capacity has increased. And we heard some pretty startling numbers about what it would have taken in growth in the city to accommodate the increase in school capacity. Not capacity, but increase in school population. Am I making, am I clear with what I'm asking?
Well, I think you're getting to the question of, if you look at the, at the new residential dwelling units that have been occurred in the city versus the new residential outside the city, the number.
Does our schools have grown over the last 10 or 20 years considerably? And what I'm trying to get at is how much our city has grown to meet that, to accommodate that growth in our schools. Do they compute, is what I'm asking?
So, yeah, when we were on that task force with the county, Tyler Heights was a good example of, that was at 140% capacity.
Right.
And I presented information in which Sally's showing to me, right, over the past five, six years, we had one new residential development. I mean, one residential unit built in that whole time, even though the school was at, and I think Alex was referring to the demographics, when he looks into the projections, and he's looking to the enrollment factors, and he does, takes all those things into consideration, he is looking at household size and how those things are changing, and that demographic is, is morphing in particular areas, specific areas. Yeah, as, as the APF relates to new residential development, that's an example of where you're at 140% capacity. You only, you only built one house, new house, in the whole school district. The other number that I was describing was, you know, throughout the whole city, we, over the past five years, we've averaged about 40 units per year, whereas the ci- the county had averaged about 130 units per year. And I'm talking about Annapolis High School District. The differences between how many units were in the city versus how many were out in the county. And most of those were apartment complexes, and, you know, those were large, the large developments. 200 and some units was, was in one year. So just giving you the idea of the growth and what's going on in terms of the nexus between the growth rate and the residential development occurring in the city versus the capacity of the school districts, and those, those relationships of how much the growth is actually impacting the capacity and the facilities associated with each of the school facilities. That's what you're.
And, and the flip side, Ms. Finlayson, is that on the capacity side, the school district has been very aggressive in, you mentioned renovating, but expanding. So, I mean, as you know, we reconstructed West Annapolis. It opened larger, Tyler Heights is in the process currently. We'll reopen larger, Rolling Knolls, just across the city line, was expanded significantly, as was Mills Parole. Hillsmere is, we're asking for design money in the current year to tackle Hillsmere. But Germantown was expanded, George Channese was expanded. Eastport Elementary had an addition on it. Annapolis Elementary would, was expanded. The middle and, the two middle schools have not needed an expansion because they were under capacity, and the high school was. So, you know, there have been significant capital investments in the vast majority, save three buildings, that serviced this, the city of Annapolis. So we're trying, obviously, we're monitoring demography and growth and development and all those other factors that I addressed earlier. But on the flip side, is we've been putting the capital dollars in to expand our footprint to keep absorbing the youngsters as well.
So the likelihood of us being able to lobby for more schools in the city are probably not too great in light of the fact that most of our schools have been recently renovated? And I know that's a question.
Well, no, I mean, again, we're not going to build a, you know, there are, as you alluded to earlier, some rather prescriptive algorithms that justify whether a new school is needed, right? And largely, it's, you know, based on demography of all of the schools within, if all nine schools within the Annapolis feeder zone are under capacity, it's very hard to explain to the public why we want to build another $35 million elementary school when everything is already under capacity. You alluded to, you know, Crofton earlier, which is an interesting story. And yes, for 20 or 30 years, the citizens of Crofton have wanted their own school. But for at least the 17 or 18 that I've been here, they, mathematically, they didn't qualify. So it's one thing to, to hope for a new school, but until you have the math behind it to justify it, and finally, you know, they cross that tipping point that they were mathematically eligible, and then after that, we were able to design, and now it's under construction, and it will be opening up in, in August of 2020.
Thank you.
Old woman Savage?
Going, may I, one more question. Well, not a question, but a comment. Going back to my initial question about the growth in the city compared to the number of new students. And I have to add, our schools have changed over the last 10 years, 20 years. We didn't have IB programs. Our middle schools were grossly under capacity for a long time, if I remember correctly. And because of the programmatic thrust that the school system has embarked upon, you know, our numbers, folks are taking their kids out of public, out of private schools and bringing them back into the public schools because we do the job. So that's one plus for the school system that cannot be misinterpreted as, for something else, let's just say. But going back to my initial question about the growth in the city, did I understand you to say, when Tyler Heights was at 143% capacity, we had had one development or one residential?
Unit.
Unit, not a development, but a unit. So we cannot equate development to the increase in students at our schools. Is that a logical deduction?
In that particular instance, I would say, yeah. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, it's certainly not, you know, reflective of a PVA generation from a development or anything for a school to be at 140% capacity. I mean, I think we know the demographics of the household size and the changes in, in that area as to why it's at 140%, but yeah, it wasn't related to any residential growth going on.
And I think if I remember correctly, the statistics we looked at a few years ago, that kind of played out, maybe not as extreme as that, but we would have had to have built over 3,000 residences in Annapolis to accommodate the growth in our, in our schools.
I haven't done that math, but yeah.
Yeah, and this is probably BP before. Thank you.
Old woman Savage?
I'll go after her.
Thank you. As the older woman for Ward Six, where Tyler Heights is, and representing the residents there, I'd be remiss if I allowed them to be used as an example for why there is no correlation between development and the school capacity. I think there is.